Welcome, everyone, to your school. Okay, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Mr. Rarick?
Yes, appointments, the appointments interim of the school guidance counselor Kate Brennan, uh, guidance coordinator, excuse me, Kate Brennan, middle school clerk Karen Fratus, mock trial advisor Gayle Gabriel.
And Mr. Rarick, will the school-based coordinator be on next time?
Yes, the high school just, uh, you're an team that you just, we'll have a contact.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to move up item 6B for Barton air conditioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, 6B.
Since our last meeting, we had a lengthy discussion on this topic, and one of the things that the committee recommended that we do is do an energy audit of all three schools to see if our schools, not only the elementarys, but the high school, middle schools, have the capacity to add an additional electrical load. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Tony Oni to our at the facilities director to update everybody on what he's gonna update.
Did National Grid do that one?
He's gonna.
Okay.
So National Grid has collected a bunch of different data from the district concerning the electrical consumption at all of the schools, all five schools. They've started doing site visits a couple of weeks ago. They're hoping to conclude their site visits at the end of this week. And my discussions with the gentlemen earlier today and on last Thursday, what they're gonna provide, provide a detailed report on the electrical consumption, what's utilizing electricity, if there's any recommended improvements that we can make. Once that detailed report is submitted to the school department, we're gonna pass it along to our electrical, or electrician consultant that we have that does electricity here in the district. And they're gonna review it, make sure that any recommendations they make will provide us, you know, some benefit as to well, what we're running now and what our capacity is moving forward.
And they said that will be done soon?
Their hope, if they can get through all the buildings, is to have some kind of report for either, for either the next meeting or the meeting after of the school committee.
Do I have any parents that wanna ask a question? Any concerns?
Hi.
Hi, you wanna come up there, please? Thank you.
So I'm happy to hear that there has been some progress on the, the energy audit. I know that's something that we've been waiting for. I'll introduce myself. My name's Charlie Page, and I'm a parent at Fort Barton. I have two children there. And it's a wonderful school, and we are grateful for all the teachers and administrators, staff in the facilities. But there's a problem at Fort Barton, the upstairs classrooms particularly, get exceedingly hot during the day. And that's what I'd like to discuss tonight just quickly. They are westerly facing classrooms. There is no shade at all and very little natural ventilation. And on hot days, the temperature in the classrooms can exceed 90 degrees during the school hours. And extended exposure to temperatures of this level present a risk to our children's safety and well-being. I've also heard firsthand accounts from teachers that on these hot days, they just can't teach effectively. The children essentially wilt in the heat and can't focus, and that's compromising the quality of our children's education. So we're here tonight really to sort of underscore the importance of this issue and fuel the fire, which it sounds like is already sort of moving along. We're very motivated to get this done, and we look forward to facilitating a solution as best and as quickly as we all can. And so I wanted to kind of introduce myself tonight, first of all, 'cause I have not been, been at these meetings before. And then I also wanted to, just sort of, assuming, I guess I wanted to ask the committee and also anyone else who wants to weigh in, what your thoughts are, knowing that we're still waiting for the energy audit, what your thoughts are about where we can go from here.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, any other parent that would like to speak?
Mr. Black? I just wanna make it clear that I'm up here talking as a parent and not as a town council member. I have three children who have either been or are still at Fort Barton. My daughter is upstairs on the second floor. My youngest is in the new pre-K room. The windows in that room do not even open. So that, to me, is an issue. My youngest comes home on these hot days. My wife has had to change him. He's drenching in sweat. My daughter will provide extended commentary about how difficult it is to focus and pay attention. And frankly, from my perspective, this is a matter of fostering a physical environment that's conducive to a learning environment. We're all focused on trying to get our kids to excel, to have the best schools possible. And frankly, when we have a physical environment that's exceeding 90 degrees, that's not conducive to anything.
What room was it that the windows didn't open? I just wanna.
Pre-K room on the first floor.
Pre-K, first floor.
So, you know, there's a little fan in there moving around. I don't even know if that poses a safety issue as a matter of egress, but, uh, so it, you know, I would just ask us to, for a moment, just to put ourselves in the shoes of these kids. I know if I went into my office and I had to work in a 90-degree office, I don't think I would be all that pleased, and I have to imagine that if any of you had to go into your office without an air conditioner, that, that would be a problem as well. So if we're not willing to give it up ourselves, and I think we need to take a hard look at how we improve the situation for our kids.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Kitsy Vane. I'm also a parent at Fort Barton. I also was looking more on the health benefits of our kids. I looked into OSHA to see what our OSHA regulations are. OSHA regulations with schools right now, we don't have any federal mandates on things. A lot of schools and a lot of states have been proactive. Right now, there's 27 states that actually have regulations on our indoor air quality for what our children have. We have guidelines that are set up. Rhode Island right now is not one of them, but we can always, OSHA will come in and they'll give us recommendations if we can't accommodate for our children or accommodate what we need for our air quality controls in the schools. But they're happy to come down and to give us input of what we need to do. We have temperature degrees of what our school has been. There's state, federal regulations of what we need to do for what temperature should be for working environment, for if we're looking at labor laws. Right now, none of them are mandated for schools, but they are for other work organizations. Different states have been proactive of doing this for our schools, of where it's accountable. So I just wanted to say that if we needed help of going on through things, we can also, if there's other avenues that we can get help for.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Black, just, just one statement that I'd like to make. This is just not a Fort Barton issue. We've got, we've got a similar issue at all of our, all of our schools. You know, being a principal at the middle school for 11 years, we've, we've lived through that, you know, during that time, and right now, being the principal of Ranger School, we're in the same situation on hot days.
Anyone else?
I imagine high school and the school is the same situation, right?
Correct.
So it sounds like the most of the problem at Fort Barton specifically is the western-exposed classrooms. My recollection of sunsets, when I get to spend sunset at the high school or Ranger or the middle school, and I can't, and really forecast it, it's, the architecture of the buildings is distinctly different. They are sort of a east-west axis, so they, they get the western exposure on sort of the long end of the building, or the, the end of the building, as opposed to getting it broadside, whereas Fort Barton has a north-south axis and so gets sort of a bank of, you know, their, their long axis is exposed to the west, so that's, although I agree, it's, you know, if it's hot, it's hot. I'll stipulate that, no matter where you are, but it does seem that the architecture of Fort Barton is different from the other, the way it's, you know, aligned east-west or north-south is different. You know, all, our bank of windows is there, which is due east, so it will get hot in the morning, I guess. Doesn't really, am I correct in that?
At Ranger, yes.
Well, all I can tell you is that Ranger, during, during the last hot day, one classroom was 96 and another classroom was 94.
I'm, I'm sure all the hot class, you know, you get kids running around, they get, the rooms get hot.
That's what I'm saying, that's district-wide.
But I think there's, but I think there's a, there's an issue across all five schools, probably to some extent. It seems that the, the way that Fort Barton is oriented is, makes it different. By degree, not necessarily that there's not a problem at the other schools. Just sort of, that's, is that correct, or will anyone challenge that opinion?
The high school gets all the access.
Dr. Locken?
And the middle school does as well, except for the bank on the east side.
The temperature have not been brought to my attention, and even I am in an acting capacity, I will be following up tomorrow with all the building principals to make sure that they're reporting if temperatures are getting up to 96 degrees. Because I don't, I can't speak for Mr. Rarick or Mr. Fiore, but I was not aware of the temperature getting up to 96 degrees in the classroom. And we'll certainly incorporate that in this facility's, rather, energy audit to make sure that that's made aware to the National Grid and how we can come up with an appropriate remedy. But again, tomorrow, I will be sending out an email to all the building principals to make sure that if they've got information or data such as this, that it's forwarded to me immediately so that we can incorporate this and have an accurate reflection in what proposals we receive.
And also, just like historically, for some folks who may not be aware, when we built the schools, if we go back 12 years from the planning stages, Fort Barton was designed specifically to maintain the same direction and the same layout, same footprint that we built up, that the old one was on.
Oh yeah, no, I'm, I'm not.
But just so people understand, we also looked at when we were constructing these three-year schools, the possibility of air conditioning in all of them. When we went to the town council at the time, our original, our original budget was for 38 million for supply.
Thirty-seven?
I believe 37 million. Council said, "We can't support that," and we had to take many things out of the plan. And one of them, one of the biggest items was the air conditioning throughout three schools. So we were well aware, even back then, that, you know, that keeping our kids in an environmentally, you know, comfortable place was important, but we simply, at the time, could not afford, you know, that cost. So that's why we don't have it, so we're supposed to say, "Why don't we build it at the time?" Well, that's why.
Yeah, that, I'm not, sort of.
No, I'm not saying you are.
Yeah, I'm not offering any criticism, just sort of trying to work us through the, sort of where the problems are and sort of, are there differences between the schools? The second thing I want to clarify is, this first came up when the PTO at Fort Barton was offering to buy air conditioners, correct?
Yes.
And that offers, as I assume is still on the table. So is there a way to move towards a, you know, it's good that we're getting information from both the principals and from National Grid, but is there a way to move towards a more rapid remedy if we have an offer to buy air conditioners? Because I think that was.
That would be up to the committee to, the committee to want to pursue it at that point, to want to do the audit. And even if you were to get them now, I'm not sure.
That it would make a substantial difference.
That would make a big difference right now, at this time, but whatever the committee would like to do, obviously.
Well, I spoke to the people on the building committee. The one was an architect, one's in construction, and they went through the whole thing with this. As Mr. Rarick said, it was all green, radiant heat in the kindergarten. It was amazing what we brought forward, and that didn't happen. And what happened passed by like 80 votes. It was very close, a lot of pounding on the doors and asking people to support us because of buildings. My kids all went to Fort Barton, and a river ran through it. I tell people, it was so moist and damp and wet, and one wall was caving in and was like, "Oh, please." So to remediate them, it was 11 million. And to bill new with a state reimbursement of 30%, it was 21. That's how we got it passed. We worked really hard so that this community would have amazing elementary schools, state-of-the-art. Something has to be done with the temperature. We know that, whether it's the air conditioning. At one place, we put the shades, there's things, things, stuff you can put on the windows, I know, but something has to be done because we know they can't function like that. We don't expect them to. And when I was in my kitchen this summer, when, I'm right on the, it was one of the hottest summers I ever remember, I was making the mashed potatoes for Sunday dinner, and my purple eyeliner dripped into the mashed potatoes because I don't have air conditioning. So I told the kids, "Potatoes are out for the rest of the summer. I was sorry." If they wouldn't eat them just 'cause they were purple, they were no longer getting the potatoes. So I understand, my house is, you know, my husband's going, "Oh, it's gonna cool off." I'm like, "It's not cooling off." So I understand how you people feel, but we'll have to do something about it, look into everything. It's not only the putting them in, it's the cost of it from Mr. Fiore and from, you know, the district, and, but I'm sure that we'll all work together, 'cause it's not acceptable.
I think what we're looking for from the audit is, A, what can we do to save money, just not for the three schools, all our schools, but whatever National Grid tells us, we want to verify with our own, our own electrical company that we contract with, to make sure that if we plug in, we have five, if Fort Barton will be okay. And if you wanted to put 10 in, would we be okay? So we know what our limits are, so you guys, you folks can make the decision. You know, in other words, the three elementary schools, I'm gonna guess, and on electrician, I'm gonna say it's gonna come back, that it can hold the load, okay? And assuming that the cost isn't too high, I'm sure, you know, at least the air conditioners at the top floor would be in consideration, the committee would look at. But, you know, if you want to do it now, we can do it now. I'm not sure if there's a, an upside to doing it right now, if we hold all the data, but...
I think we could move ahead on getting information about what, 'cause, you know, we may want to, I can, I can see us saying, "Yes, we think it's a good idea to get the air conditioners. Let's try and start to get information about what air conditioners will, you know, have a certain cost associated with them, both in terms of what can be purchased and then what the cost would be to run them and what, you know, the, once we know what the capacity is, which, which air conditioners would be feasible." So, you know, I think it would be reasonable to say yes to the PTO pending getting this information. We should be moving ahead with planning to, to get the units, rather than, you know, letting it wait for the audit and then we sort of have to think about that and then kind of, you know, it will go on and on and on. And of course, that'll be January, and then we'll be all fine.
And again, I just advise the committee, I don't think that Fort Barton's gonna be an isolated question for you. You're going to get, once this, if you move forward with them, it's a question you're gonna have to somewhere draw a line to say, "Yeah, we'll have them here," because we know the high schools and the middle school can't hold it, and the cost would be extremely high. So you have to understand that you do, there will be an equity issue within the district if you look for.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that equity means treating every single person exactly the same, but.
It's, it's hot for our middle school, and I, as the superintendent, I worry about all our kids. It's hot for all our kids. It's uncomfortable for the middle school kids. It's uncomfortable for the high school kids as well. And no one's here to, you know, and I'm here to voice for them, to be their advocate as well. It's something you need to consider.
And, and, you know, if it, if it is that significant an issue, then we certainly need to address it. Right now, we have actually a willing partner to help us address the issue in one school. So I think we should probably try to move forward with that in some fashion, unless others have other ideas.
This requires some checking, because first of all, sometimes it takes $400 to buy a unit and $1,000 to monitor properly, because this is not private house where you can put it on using the kit which came in the box.
Well, and that's the information we need.
That's correct. So you have to check how much it is, and the next thing is, and, and the next thing to do is to basically find out what these temperatures are, because.
Right.
I understand, I'm not saying that everyone is coming here providing us with the false data, but if you truly do it, you have to go measure these temperatures or have some system and, and for a while.
Right, so we're looking forward to getting information from National Grid and information from the principals about what the temperatures actually are in the, the schools and, I guess, what time of day. But I think we can also sort of respond to the PTO's offer and say, "Yes, at least, you know, we, we welcome that and we'll work, move forward trying to figure out if we can do something about it." So, is that reasonable?
I think with or without air conditioners, I would like to see other heat abatement measures installed, such as the window tinting in any western-facing window to limit solar gain, to look at the possibility of installing awnings. They can make an enormous difference, even if we go ahead with the air conditioning units. If we have awnings and window tinting, it should bring our, our electrical costs way down. And for some rooms, the awnings and the tinting may be enough. But we also need to make sure we have fresh air ventilation in every classroom. I didn't like hearing that the pre-K room has no fresh air. That should have been part of the building design.
I was unaware that there was no, when the windows didn't open, no, again, that was the first I heard of this to see.
So they're, they're supposed to.
There may certainly be lots of other things that we want to do, particularly when we get information from National Grid and when we get information about what the actual ambient temperatures are. But I think it's also, you know, part of the issue has been that the PTO has come to us and said they're willing to do this. I think we should try and at least start to get, get more information about exactly what we can do with their offer.
Well, if, I, I think we also need to, to know exactly what the offer is. I, I would like to have in writing how many units you propose donating, which classrooms they would be installed in, and, you know, based on what criteria, such as all second-floor western-facing windows as opposed to the classrooms that my children are in.
So I think if, if I was gonna ask for us to take any action, it would be to, you know, say, "Let's move ahead with getting information about what types of units would do the job, what would they cost, you know, what would they cost in terms of ongoing electrical expenditure, and do we have the capacity to, to put them in the classrooms from what the infrastructure that's there already?"
The air conditioners are designed by square footage.
Right.
Every school's classroom's about 900 square feet, so we need to find.
Right, so that's.
And factor in the fact, and you have to calculate the sun side, because it's gonna be working harder than it would if it was just an normal, you know, room.
Plus the fact that there are 25 children and some adults in the room.
Right, you know, also, you turn it on sooner, you're gonna use probably less electric energy.
It's something that goes probably between 14,000 and 8,000 each, and the question also then becomes a sound, because you know, at least two are running, it's arctic here. So those are all.
Right, absolutely. But that's, I mean, that's, I'm saying, we should, you know, get that information and at least agree in principle that if it's a workable solution, we'll move forward with it.
What question comes to my mind now, then, is who decides what units should be purchased for those classrooms?
I think that's, that's a question for the later date, once, oh, well.
Well, because, you know, I, I asked for a written proposal saying, "We propose to buy so many units." Now, do we ask then the PTO to tell us, "And these are the units we would buy. They are energy efficient. They are designed to meet the, you know, needs of that classroom?" Or do we, as the school department, say, "Oh, well, these are home units. If we're gonna install something, it has to be, you know, a different kind of unit." Then you can't go to Walmart and buy your home bedroom unit and donate it to us because that's not really appropriate.
I guess I envision it as a collaboration, 'cause they've got the money and we've got the schools and we've all got the children, so.
But who has the expertise to determine what is the appropriate unit to go into a classroom?
We go to our electrical company that we use, our, our electricians, and unknown around Newport County, and they're highly regarded, and we rely on their opinion.
Okay.
And then I would report to you, they said we need X size air conditioner based on your room size, you know, the sun side, and then they said we need at least X size. And then it's a matter of finding that size.
I'm not suggesting that we just kind of go up to Home Depot and get a bunch of air conditioners. I think, you know, we, we have.
They may order them from there, I don't know.
Well, maybe, maybe it will be Home Depot, but, you know, I think we need to have the appropriate expertise, obviously.
But one of the things that you need to know, and I know something about this, I used to sell them in early life when I was a teacher, working two jobs.
Oh.
And I know, it was good money, actually, over the years. But one of the things we were told, they stopped making them. They stopped making them at a certain time of the year, and then they start production up again. So whatever, you, we could like vote tonight, and even if we could get the information together within the next few days, they may not be available until this.
So that's why I'm saying, why wait for, you know, let's sort of say, in principle, this is what we should do. Let's, you know, it may not be doable ultimately, but I think it's reasonable to at least start to gather the information.
Yes?
I'd like to address some of the questions that you had. First of all, Kim Sutherland, the president of the PTO at Fort Barton, and we have agreed to do the entire top floor. Every classroom that has children in it, we will put air conditioning into. If we can afford to do more, we'll do more, but we've committed to doing the top floor for now. We can put something in writing for you, Mrs. Herman. We would've done that in June, if you had asked us to do that in June, but the request was made to wait for the facility study that was supposed to be done this summer.
Yeah, but I assume that cost is an issue, whether these units cost 1,000 or 5,000 might, in fact, might affect whether you can afford to offer an air conditioner for every.
So we would be happy to partner with the school committee and the school department to find something that is reasonably cost, that we could afford, that's still gonna fit into the school.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of gathering information, finding out what would be, what kind of units we would need, what would be the cost for buying them, what would be the cost for installing them, whether they can safely stay in all winter, or that we're going to have to be concerned about removing them.
Can I, aren't some of these questions answered? Look behind you. There are air conditioners in this room. I mean, I think some of these questions have already been answered, and some of the schools have air conditioning units.
I would say these units are not appropriate for use in a classroom. When they run, you cannot hear us. We have them off.
Wasn't this process gone through already then?
Because we don't have them in classrooms. These were installed after, about 10 years ago, when we lost about 20% of the library collection due to mold. And so it became a priority to install them in here. Whether these were the best ones to install, probably, whether these were the best to install, I don't know. What I'm saying is I don't, I don't think these are appropriate for a classroom.
Well, that's fine, but it's not appropriate for kids to be in 96-degree classrooms for extended periods of time. And I think that's just unsayably accessible in a library.
Yes, and I did not say that I am opposed to installing the air conditioners. I said I'm in favor of a thoughtful process of selecting the best air conditioner for the classroom.
To answer your other question about not being able to hear, right now, there is an industrial-sized fan on the top floor, which is extremely loud for that entire top floor. My son will tell you it's hard to concentrate, and he asked to have his desk moved because it was so noisy. So I'm not, I'm not thinking that an air conditioner is going to be much noisier than that.
But if we have the choice, we certainly want to choose a quieter one.
Naturally.
Mr. Black?
Yeah, just, just one final comment, and I appreciate the discussion and the opportunity to kind of talk it through. I also appreciate due process, 'cause I think it's important. That being said, I have just two final comments. I think if we're gonna do a cost-benefit analysis here of standalone units that the PTO may or may not purchase or donate, I think it would be worthwhile to look at other scenarios, which include retrofitting whatever HVAC systems are in the new elementary schools to be able to have a more systemic solution. HVAC systems are in the new elementary schools, to be able to have a more systemic solution and run those numbers up against that. And then the second thing is, is if we're talking about equity, I think we need to talk about reverse equity. So if we're going to go through a due diligence process here for Fort Barton, then I say we're going to yank them out of Pecassett. We've got to talk about yanking them out here. And we also got to talk about turning them off in the administrator's office. Because, I mean, it's reverse equity. And, you know, if we're talking about having it fair to schools and classrooms to have a season, and we're going to, you know, I don't think the Pecassett guys went through this much due diligence, for better or for worse. But then we need to talk about what we're going to do in the interim so that we don't have some kids in town being okay and then some kids not being okay. So.
Thank you.
Well, when we speak about equity, we all speak in the sense of what kind of money we will have to put out to actually maintain something which was purchased by, because we can take a donation of $5,000 and it's going to cost $15,000 a year to maintain this. One is electricity, two, mounting of these units, three, removing them and storing them and all of these things. So now if we, we do the same thing with sports, that sometimes someone comes and says, well, we will, we are going to start a team. What is a long-term plan? Is this going to be dropped on our lap at some point?
Sure.
So donations are always welcome, but you have to check what you are getting yourself into.
Absolutely. Which is why I'm advocating to look at a more systemic solution. The reality is, is that this problem is not going to go away. So if we don't solve it this year, we're going to be back talking about it next year, and the year after that, and the year after that. I understand dollars and cents, believe me. I'm going to go through the same budget process that you guys are. And if we need to talk about capital plans here, then we should. But the reality is, we have kids sweating, distracting in 90-plus degree rooms, and frankly, you can't put a price on that. So I'm willing to do whatever I need to do as a parent with children in this town that are going to be in the school system for the next 18 years to fix this problem, and I have to imagine I'm not alone on this. So I would encourage everyone here to collaborate, but not only think short-term, but long-term, because the reality is, this is not going to go away. If anything, we're going to see more warmer days as the year goes on. It's just going to get worse.
So, yeah, and I think, Mr. Gerlach, you're absolutely correct that we know, you know, we know there's a problem. We know there's a problem in probably all of the schools. I would suggest that the problem appears to be greater at Fort Barton. But we also have, at this point, not enough information to make a decision tonight, and I wouldn't suggest that we should do that. However, I do think we can at least acknowledge that there's a problem and that we should work collaboratively with the PTO and with anybody else who's willing to help us, including the town council and the budget committee, to try and solve the problem. That's, I think that's really all we're being asked to do at this point.
I just wanted to clarify two things. I wanted to talk about data collection a little bit, which, you know, we have now started. I want to be sure that doesn't become a time sync.
Right.
There have been, you know, a few references to the time of year, and, you know, well, you know, it's not a big deal now. That's fine. It was a big deal last spring. It didn't get dealt with, and here we are. And so what I think as a community, we cannot do is wait until next spring and, you know, talk about getting data collected in these classrooms and find out, oh, well, you know, now it's almost the end of September and, you know, it's only 78 in the classroom. Oh, it's not a big deal. But it's going to be a big deal. We all know it's coming. We can't pretend it's not. And we can't use the fall and the winter as an excuse to, you know, delay this problem and then have it become an issue again in the spring. We have a chance now to deal with it, and I think we need to make it a priority. The other thing is that I just wanted to sort of underscore what I think a couple other people have said, and that, you know, we understand the operating side of this equation, and we're not looking to, you know, dump something on to the district. We're looking to collaborate with the district and solve what I think everyone seems to be acknowledging as an issue. So whatever opportunities there are to fund operating of these units in addition to the purchase, you know, is there any value in exploring setting up some type of an endowment or a nonprofit that parents could donate to and get a tax deductible donation and have that endowment, you know, fund this sort of operation of the air conditioning? I don't know if that's possible, but it's something to look into.
Do you already have one?
For air conditioners?
Education Foundation.
You have an education foundation. Any parent or any citizen can donate money and direct specifically where they'd like that money to go to if it's tax deductible.
You can direct it?
Absolutely. That's how we set it up.
And one other thing that I think maybe is sort of minutia, but as far as the discussion about the operation and installing, removing, we have discussed in the past portable floor units. So that is a potential answer to some of the concerns about the installation and removal seasonally.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I wanted to add one thing. My name is Sean DeBeck. I have two sons at Fort Barton. And I just, I went to Fort Barton when I was a child, the old Fort Barton, and I just wanted to add about some, Dr. Larkin was talking about some of the, as far as equity goes and the different schools. I don't know what the two new elementary schools are designed like, but the old elementary at Fort Barton was, there was a cross breeze because the floor was, there was classrooms on either side of the hallway, so you would get a cross breeze. The way it's designed now, there is no cross breeze on the second floor, and when it, it gets extremely hot. And that's what she was talking about, the big industrial fan and the one, like janitor's door or whatever that goes to the roof. So it is a little bit different. I don't know how the other two schools are designed, and I don't want to speak for that, but I would say it's a pretty major issue at Fort Barton in particular because of that, the design of the building. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
So I guess I'd like to ask, maybe we need a vote on this, or maybe we don't, but I think we should, you know, maybe Mr. Notarani can start to, Tariani can start to work with the PTO to get specific information about what types of units we would need, and then also what resources they actually have to purchase the units, and ask them for a, you know, a more concrete written proposal about what exactly they're hoping to do. Do we need?
I don't think you need a vote. What I would like, what I'd recommend is that Al speak to our electricians, Coastal Electric.
Oh, yeah.
And get information from them, and then move the PTO. So when Al goes to talk to them, it will be, okay, talk to our electricians, assuming the audit doesn't change anything significantly within the building. This is what we need.
Okay.
And then begin the conversation with them, based on the size and the location of those.
Are you okay with that, Al?
Absolutely.
And could we also get information on the window tinting and the possibility of awnings or any...
The awnings would be, we can certainly look into that. The window tinting, Al's in the process of getting the company to install some in the high school cafeteria, which is all glass. Even though it faces the east side, it still heats up in the, you know, during the day for obvious reasons. So we are in the process of seeing how that works. And then that would be something we could also report back on once we get that installed. That's in the process, Al?
The window tinting we've purchased, we're going to actually try in-house, Mr. ...
Okay.
We're going to try it in-house. We've purchased it at Home Depot. It's supposed to be a film that will repel some type of sunlight. I'm not sure how well it works, but we're going to, we're certainly going to attempt on a particular window to see how the installation will work. And...
Is there any industrial grade film that can be professionally applied and have better results?
To be frank with you, I could talk to a car window tinting place, would actually probably be able to do it for a classroom window as well. I can inquire and see if there's something.
Yeah. I think it's worthwhile getting any kind of information we can.
Right.
We can. And also keep in mind that during this energy audit, which they'll be visiting Fort Barton tomorrow, they will be looking tomorrow and Wednesday to begin to the week. They are going to be looking at the circulators in the classrooms to make sure that they're properly ventilating the classrooms. Proper airflow might reduce some of that as well. I'm not saying that's an end-all or it would take the place of air conditioning. I'm just saying they are going to look at that to make sure that that's operating properly and not contributing to any, you know, temperatures.
Miss Wardell, you're going to ask the janitor or someone, your sort of temperature monitor person, whoever that may be, to sort of get actual readings for us? Is that, you've got them?
I've been keeping track since last year, yes.
Do you want to share them with us?
Do we have thermometers in every classroom?
I actually have my custodian go around every single day.
Oh. Yes, I know you. I'm familiar with the guns.
I'll just go with the instructions.
I'm sorry, what?
They shoot it at the ceiling, yeah.
Is yours feel the same as hers, or?
No, my information's different. For anyone who would like it, I have copies of temperatures in one second floor classroom from last, last spring. I don't want to get into minutia, but if we're talking about temperature collection, here it is.
I would like a copy.
I would like to copy that too, if you have different information from my teachers than I do. Thank you.
Well, it might not be from the...
It is from the teacher's.
Oh, no. I had yours. Isn't yours from the janitor?
Wonderful science exercise.
The children are graphing.
What room number?
As the temperature rises.
Excuse me, what room number is this?
She's going to...
Room number 220.
Nothing focuses the mind of a man other than the fact that you're talking to, or stood in this classroom.
And Al, you'll check on that window that doesn't open, please?
I have my notes, Mrs. Black. I'll be out tomorrow at some point with the custodians.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So what I'll do is have Al report back.
At our next meeting?
He'll talk to, set up a meeting with Mrs. Sutherland, the PTO.
Yes.
As soon as he talks to Coastal. He gets us the part information. In the meantime, we'll research the lines and get to the class.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Thank you. We'll get that done. Mr. Gerlach?
Yes, correspondence. You received an email today from Mr. Brownie, the Barton Grade Plan Committee, thanking three of our employees for the work they did in helping with Barton Grade Day. Sheila Kaufman, I recognize her for getting the students as part of the community service to get involved in public planning and getting volunteers. Kathy Marshall, who's our culinary arts teacher, made 17 apple pies for the event, and the apple pies were five-star, called Minister Brownie. And Bill Phillips and the students were going to visit the birdhouses that were, would get it by the business.
Yep.
Congratulations to Sheila and Kathy.
They did a great job, and just tell them we need the pie plates back, okay?
Don't worry. Kathy, she'll get the plates back.
To the schools. Okay, thank you. And the policies?
Yes, you have two policies for the second reading. Policy 1264 kindergarten first grade eligibility and standardized test incentives for the second reading. One adjustment that we made since our last reading, Mr. Larkin brought it up, was that we add the terminology of these children's interests in the town along with the minister that will serve on the committee of children's.
Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion for the first one?
I make a motion to approve the...
Is the first grade or the kindergarten?
Yep. Policy 1264 kindergarten and first grade eligibility.
Second.
All votes in favor?
I make a motion to approve policy 1265 standardized test incentives.
Second.
Any questions? No? Mr. Kupac? Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Okay. All votes in favor?
Yes, waste water treatment facility. I'm pleased to announce that the work is all finished. Again, we've been connected since the start of school, but all the work, the landscaping has been completed. It's been hydropeded, and that looks very nice out there. So I'll stop, if you want to, I can act it out. Yeah, this is kind of related. If we can go down to the change order for the wastewater treatment. Is that item, please?
I'd like to move up 7E approval of change order under New Business.
Second.
All votes in favor?
And I'll let Doug speak. Yes, they have, they have.
Apologies for the wrong change order request was including the original package. After constructing the filters at Ranger and at the administrative, outside the administration building, the engineer had recommended that we put fences around them. Apparently, the ones in the woods in Ranger are susceptible to four-wheel drive vehicles and other stuff coming a little too close to them. So we asked the construction company for a change order, which you see in front of you, for six-foot fences around both the main area outside the high school and at Ranger. And the change order is for $20,184. And I'm proposing that we had a 5% contingency on this project that I don't envision us using of about $35,000. So this amount would come from the money that we set aside for any unforeseen contingencies.
And we did go out to, you know, we did ask the company, an outside company, to do a bid for us, and it came to $28,640 for the same work.
To validate that this was a, the best deal.
I'm recommending the change order also because if anything goes wrong, then East Coast, you know, is responsible for hiring the sub. It would be required to do any...
The engineer recommended that it would be a good idea to use the same vendor in case anything happened to any of the sewer work, that they would be responsible for it.
Yeah, that's right.
So the, the original proposal did not include any fencing, second?
Correct.
More than a cooler?
Second.
All votes in favor?
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Student enrollment. I know we talked previously about our need, a need for first grade classroom, and what I provided the committee is just our enrollment figures for the last three years. You can see the trend at the elementary school is increasing. We've increased 27 students since 11th grade, with a big spike, as you can see in that grade one, in the sense of creating the need. These numbers that you see here include our out-of-district placement students for special needs, because we account for those students as well. There are five out-of-district students included in the 733 number that you see for pre-K through grade four. There are 14 out-of-district placements for grades five through eight, make up that 585 number. And the high school has 18 students out-of-district. So our total is 1,869, but we got that many minus the out-of-district, which are 39. So we actually have for bodies 1,830 students in our classes, 39 students, excuse me, 30 students. So our numbers are trending, were pretty much slight decreases at the middle school and the high school, which we were coming, but our elementaries are starting to increase gradually, which, again, they'll eventually come through our system. So that's why our staffing and everything else we've maintained at, it is the staff's fault.
But you also have an influx of some additional children. This is not just coming from the bottom.
Right. So it's not, yeah.
Because there's always...
It's going to follow the classes diagonally.
Twenty influx, nine.
Right, they're going to keep coming.
But these are no additional moving into the town, moving into our school system, not just moving through our pipeline, because when you look at 130 enters, this turns to 151 next year. 139 to 148. So this is an add-on of 10, which does not show up in our system a year before.
Right. And we don't know what those pre-Q, what those, you know, K numbers, we still have. Because we don't offer all day K. We have kids that live in town. We don't see until, you know, first grade.
First grade.
So we don't know they're there because they don't show up.
To Lakeview.
Right, that's where our bump. But for a couple of years, we were seeing really a flat line. You know, our Ks and our first grades really weren't moving, but they did this past year.
From one to two, two to three.
Oh, right, they, you know, it goes that checking board then. But again, when there's housing developments, just some background on it, Mrs. Black and I, I made aware of it from the planning board. I sent letters. I sent letters about Sandy Woods. I sent letters, you know, about, I'm sorry, what's the one in the...
One Mill.
Bill, One Mill, the development just off of Fish Road.
Culture.
Culture Farms. You know, when they say we're going to put 40 units in, or whatever the number is, our architect had built the element...
Okay, is that it?
Yes, that's just a quick-
Home teacher?
I'm asking the school committee to approve the plan-span request for the middle school student, you know, in the department.
Make a motion to approve the request?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you. The next item, approval of electric vehicle club. You remember last year, we had the electric car here for Mr. Fernandez and some students working on. Mr. Fernandez would like to start an after-school club, so more students can participate in developing, going further than they were last year. So, again, at no cost to the committee, he's volunteering his time, which we certainly appreciate, so I think it's a great opportunity for our students. And I'm asking the committee to approve the-
It's a wonderful idea, because everyone was excited when they saw the car driving here and driving the parade, and now that more students will be able to. And when I, when I study the STEAM applications I'm seeing for charter schools, STEAM charter schools, they always say, the curriculum model is an integrated, project-based methods that make learning more meaningful for all students. And we've done that at Tiverton High School forever, and we hope to continue doing it. And this is one of the big things that does it, along with this, Coach Phillips' boat building, and the fab lab we have now, and all these kind of things we're trying to do to make school exciting for kids. So that's, that's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez.
I'm going to let you choose it.
Second.
Any questions?
Just thank you, Mr. Fernandez, for continuing your work and involving as many students who are interested.
And this learning isn't measured on the kneecap, but I think when they get internships and then they get jobs, it certainly is a profitable, successful story for our students. Thank you.
Nothing else?
All those in favor? Thank you.
Well, bid, because the bids will close this morning, we provide copies on your table Sunday, and I'll try to-
Just a little background, because of the volatility of heating oil cost, we've, we've been allowed about a 24-hour window with the bidders to lock into the price for this coming heating year. So I've timed the bid, so we received the bid this morning with anticipation of having the school committee meeting tonight. We led the bid for the East Bay communities. I offer all the school departments and towns to participate in our bid to try to maximize our purchasing power, so it becomes worthwhile for some of the vendors to come out to the East Bay. This year, we have the Portsmouth School Department with us, and we had four municipalities. We had Middletown, Bristol, Portsmouth, and Tiverton, so we had a pretty good participation rate. And as you see in the memo, the offer for the next 12 years from Superior Plus is for $3.31 a gallon, so I'm recommending the committee approve that, and we will be locked in for that rate for this heating season.
And what do we have allocated per gallon?
And this year's budget, we had $3.50, so we'll have some slight favorability there, but I usually don't get too excited about it until I see some of the usage patterns, because there's quite a bit of volatility in how much heating oil we use from year to year.
And we're doing this with the town?
The town is, yes, I believe they've already locked in today, but they-
I would say they're doing it with us.
They were offered the same rate, so I was pleased to see them participate as well.
Will you approve it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Great, thank you.
We have some announcements, reports. Does anyone have any announcements, reports? Ms. Diane Santa has a lovely announcement about our trip today to Rights Health and Wellness.
Mrs. Black and I attended the Rhode Island Department of Education Health and Wellness Collaborative Meeting, and they celebrated the fact that our policy had been approved. Tiverton was one of four districts who has-
I celebrated it.
-an approved, updated policy, so we were happy to be there and thank everyone for their support.
Eleven districts went, were involved, and so four finished their policies, and we were one of those four. So that was very exciting. Our trip over there wasn't as memorable, because Diane's thing didn't work. It wasn't talking to her, so I had to give her the directions, and then someone called the phone, and then all the directions went away, and I pushed the wrong button, and it was an alarm system and alert, in Chinese, so we had to pull over so that we didn't get arrested. But we made it home safely. I don't know what I pushed, but it wasn't good. But we're back. Okay, thank you. And last night at the town council meeting, Mr. Phillips presented the canes that will be given to the eldest male and female in town, and a beautiful plaque that, of mahogany, that their name will go on, on the town hall wall. So his students made that, so they were all very proud. They, we used to do it, we had a tradition, but then someone lost the cane, but finally we located it, but now we have three, so that'll be, well, those things happen.